All set?
Yeah.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We'll now call the meeting to order. Uh, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the very goal of which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with the right of justice for all.
Real quick, before we get started, this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on YouTube. People will be joining from home. Can they raise their hand in the chat? Um.
They can. I just want to announce the people at home are having issue with the video today, but you should be able to hear and see our screen.
Am I too loud? Because I'm talking close to my microphone. No, okay. Um, okay. And also, I would like to announce some executive sessions that we had over the past month. On September 29th and September 30th, we had police contract, an executive session to discuss police contract negotiations. On October 7th, we had administrative personnel discussion. And October 10th, we had another police contract negotiation discussion. Uh, with that, I'll next move to the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of September 12?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? I have a couple of small typo edits, but I'll just submit to correct, but otherwise, um, that's it. Can I get a vote?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, I mean, okay, motion passes. Uh, next up are the reports. Police Chief, you're first.
Uh, thank you. Good evening. For the month of September 2022, the Euclid Township Police Department officers documented 1,086 entries in the Police Department Call Reporting System. During the reporting period, the officers issued 98 traffic citations, 37 written warnings, they investigated 31 motor vehicle crashes, and they arrested 18 individuals. Officers conducted three motor carrier details at the weigh station resulting in 569 commercial vehicles being weighed, uh, one of which was found to be overweight. During the detail, the officers also performed 13 inspections and found numerous violations resulting in four vehicles and two drivers being placed out of service. Sergeant McBride performed seven additional commercial motor vehicle inspections during his normal workday, identifying numerous violations, uh, and one of those vehicles was stopped for operating on a restricted roadway, which we, we know is a concern particularly off of North Ship Road and Whitford Road. Year to date, the officers have documented 9,266 calls in our call reporting system. They've arrested 115 individuals. They've issued 908 traffic citations, 261 written warnings. They've investigated 266 motor vehicle crashes, and they've weighed 2,903 vehicles, uh, for the year. Uh, and I'm happy to report that we did not have any Narcan administrations for the month.
Great. Thank you. Treasurer?
Uh, good evening. Through the month of September, in the general fund, we have collected just over 86% of our budgeted revenues and have spent just under 71% of our budgeted expenditures.
Okay, great. Thank you. Public Works?
Thank you. Uh, for the month of September, the daily average flow to the Downingtown Treatment Plant was, uh, 1,314,697 gallons per day. And there were no new sewer connections to either the Dara or the Eagleby Wastewater Treatment Plant. Uh, for the month of September, the township received 1.34 inches of rain. Uh, year to date, we're at 30.52 inches of rain for Euclid Township, which is still, um, below average for the year. Um, the department responded to 132 PA one calls for the month of September. Uh, that we had crews out to both clean and televise 6,587 feet of sanitary sewer pipe as well as 490 feet of storm sewer pipe. Uh, we did wrap up our 2022 paving program. And we're also out doing sign repairs for neighborhoods that were, um, did see their road paved. Um, the Public Works Department was also out to do stormwater repairs on Beach Street, Ravenwood, Stoughton, and Santill at Norwood. Uh, we were also out, um, to clear debris from stormwater basins that we know are issues during heavy, heavy rain events. Um, and the department also held training classes on trench safety and operations as well as confined space safety and operations.
Thank you. Fire Marshal?
Uh, yes. For the month of September, the Building Department issued 120 permits for construction activities. Total of 131 inspections were conducted, 25 fire code inspections completed, 60 use and occupancy certificates were issued, and the Fire Marshal responded to eight incidents during working hours.
Okay. Thank you. Lionville Fire Company?
Uh, the Lionville Fire Company for the month of September responded to 46 incidents. There were 28 in Euclid, eight in Upper Euclid, four in West Pikeville, six in other municipalities, uh, bringing the year to date to 456.
Thank you. You can, Euclid Ambulance? I don't think they're here, right? Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the reports?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
I have to.
Oh, great.
You always have a comment.
Nice.
Um, first one is for our Chief of Police. Is the department participating in the Blue Beards for Charity event this year? And did you want to share a couple of words about that?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I just put the directive for that out today. Uh, the President of the Association, uh, Police Department has, uh, to do that again this year. So the officers would be able to start participating today. This is going to be, I think, the fourth year we're participating in a charity, uh, spade up of most of the police departments throughout Chester County. Um, what we're basically doing is causing our restrictions on our attire to change a little bit by the record. So the male officers generally choose to wear a beard, and we'll grow that through the end of this year. And our female officers generally want to wear nail polish, and so they have colors of their choosing that they can wear. And to do that, they donate money. And, um, whatever that amount of money is that they donate, their association then matches that. And that's happening at almost every police department in the county. And at the end of that, uh, donation period, all that money is given to, uh, four local charities. Uh, Unite for Her is one, uh, the San Bucow Fund is one, the, uh, Domestic Violence Center of Chester County. And I believe as of last year, over $60,000 had been raised by the officers in the county so far. They're just continuing to add to that. Uh, they're adding some different things, uh, to try to generate, um, more money as well for those charities. They're selling t-shirts and signs and that kind of thing as well. So it's been a really good program. The officers really enjoy, uh, being able to do that as well. So it's been great. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then my only other comment was, I believe it's also Fire Prevention Week, and Lionville Fire Company is holding an event later this week. I don't know if anyone wants to make an announcement about this or not. I'm just trying to get, there's a lot going on in the community, so.
Thing, and I believe starts at 6:00 PM at the firehouse.
That is all of my comments. Thank you.
Um, any comments from the public? All in favor of accepting the reports?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, now we're on to business. First item on the agenda is a Devon Drive traffic update. Scott?
Right. So the Downingtown Area School District was on the Planning Commission's agenda for last Wednesday. Prior to that meeting, we had discussions with the Downingtown Area School District related to Devon Drive and traffic calming, projects that could occur there. One of the things that was discussed was actual, um, medians in Devon Drive to kind of create a, a visual slowdown point at two locations, one near the YMCA and the other near the student parking lot. We're working with the district now. They're revising their plans, um, to take this into consideration. I, I did want to note too, that the discussion of a traffic study did come up at that, um, at the Planning Commission meeting. And having one done post, uh, post-construction, so that is something that the Planning Commission will be considering, and obviously will come to the board, um, when it's before the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Great. Uh, is there anything to add? Anyone want to add Devon Drive traffic update?
Uh, I also wanted to announce, because I don't know with, that we had this for the last meeting, but we did get approval from PennDOT for a school zone on Devon Drive.
I was going to ask for that update.
We're working through what needs to happen to get flashers and, um, signage up on Devon Drive.
Okay, great. Are there any comments from the public about the Devon Drive?
Question.
Sure.
Uh, they, Scott, I was at that meeting, and are they, are they looking at, maybe, they still just have one entrance on their plan? Are they looking at an option with another entrance?
The, the plan as proposed now does not show.
Okay. It's. One entrance to the, and they're going to have more students there?
Well, the, the way that it was discussed and without getting too far into the plan was that there would not be an increase in students.
I, I think they're actually projecting a decrease in students, aren't they? They're over the next 10 years. I, I don't, I'm not, I'm just, this is what I heard, and I don't want to, I don't want to make this official. I know, but I, my understanding is that.
It's more for.
The, the way they're teaching, not because they have more kids.
Yeah, yeah. But they're, they're saying that it's not, they don't anticipate more students or faculty even. Yeah. That's the word from the school district.
I think, say, I would be very cautious with the school district. Cause I, I have asked a number of times, and I was told there'll be no new construction. They're going to be filling in some of the courtyards. And then when I came to the meeting last Wednesday, there was a new piece of building on there. Now, I have two board members that I have notes. I have messages from them saying there'll be no new building. And it looks like they want to do that. I would strongly encourage you to, to tell them no on that. Here's what they have. The population's going down. I mean, and, and the concept that they're looking at, investing all this money in, it's not common. It's, you know, an hour for lunch for high school kids.
Yeah, I don't know what to, yeah.
Just say, it's okay, because they said so.
Right, well.
Look into the please.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll definitely vet the plan, like.
Just go by history, just the school district.
Go by history?
Their history of honesty and dealing with us and let it go.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Swimer. Are there any other comments about the Devon Drive traffic update? Okay, moving on, business item number two are the appointments to the Community Day Committee. And just before we do that, I just want to shout out to all of the volunteers and staff that work the police and the Public Works Department that work to make the, um, Community Day a very fun community event. It's a lot of work, and they work all year to get it organized. So thank you to the Community Day for, Committee for doing that.
Uh, well, I'd like to move to appoint Joanne Ganski, John Ganski, Gretchen Grant, Tim Grant, Karen Milmott, Barbara Phillips, Joanne Benton, and Kate Carpenter, um, to the Community Day Committee. These are all returning, uh, would be returning members to the committee.
Oh, they want to do it again. Awesome. Uh, I'll second that. Are there any comments or questions about the appointments to the Community Day Committee from the public? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, next up, the EAC has a tree vitalized grant application, and I believe Tony Gorkin was here to talk a little bit about that. Yes, it is.
Okay. The environmental advisory council is working on, uh, application for a pre-vitalized, uh, grant to add trees, shrubs, and other plantings to the park here.
Is it on? Wow, I heard it loud and clear, though.
Some of this is a follow-up to the Heart of Euclid project, which, uh, started in 2019 to introduce native plants and sustainable practices into the park. Um, this, uh, project includes, um, three areas, uh, tree plantings, uh, a, uh, stream buffer along the stream. And, uh, the purpose of this is to add to the beauty of the park, to continue the introduction of native plants and sustainable practices. And some of those plantings to further protect the ponds and the stream and promote filtration, better water quality, and all of those issues. And to continue to educate the public on good practices. So, uh, the grant is being prepared and will be going in shortly.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for doing that work to apply for the grant. I had, just have a question. So many people come here to fish, uh, you know, it's a catch and release here. I see people every weekend enjoying the park. Uh, will there, I know you're planning on doing some buffering around the ponds. There will still be places. Is it just a partial buffering? There'll still be lots of open places where people can get to the water and look at it, or?
The plans for around the ponds are addition of trees to replace some of the ones that had to be removed. Um, if you've looked out there, you would know that over the history of this park, a lot of the trees are reaching age.
Yes.
We wouldn't be constricting the ponds. The, the buffer along the stream might result in, but nobody's fishing.
Yeah, I got you. Okay. And is it the stream up here leading to the ponds or the stream down below?
Below.
Okay.
Below the ponds.
Okay.
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 There is a blue heron that fishes there.
Ah, well, there you go.
He will still be able to.
He follows his own rules. It's okay.
So, and, and just as, as a note, aside from that, the Heart of Euclid team is going to continue its practice of winter sowing, native plant seeds in jugs to continue to support its gardens and to expand the, uh, and add to this grant with plants for that. And while I'm up here, I would like to take this opportunity to announce Monsters Masks and Pollinators. Uh, the weekend, the Saturday before Halloween, this is a repeat of what was a very successful and fun activity last year. So, uh, it'll be here at the park on that Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00. There's some smaller versions of this outside on the table to take with you and help publicize it. Uh, we will be handing out packets of native plant seeds and also, um, seedlings of trees.
Ooh.
Uh, we will have information about the, um, recycling and about the, um, plastic bag ordinance. And I understand the police car will be there.
Yes.
Awesome.
Dear, the kids enjoyed, uh.
A hybrid vehicle demonstration, right?
Running the, uh, running the, uh, siren and whatever. So they'll be trick or treating for, uh, the kids. So, uh, kids and adults are encouraged to wear, uh, costumes and come to Monsters Masks and Pollinators.
Great.
Thank you.
Um.
One to three. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Tony. And I just wanted to add, as part of that grant application, um, there's a landowner grantee agreement that needs to be executed by the township. So, um, one of the reasons I wanted that on the agenda this evening was just to formally vote to have us sign that. I, I'll sign on behalf of the township.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to sign the tree vitalized grant application? Let, to allow Scott Greenley to sign for the township for the tree vitalized grant application?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
I just wanted to say that I think Tony has undersold her work a little bit.
I think so.
Looking through the grant application, uh, if you've walked through the park, Baird Park outside, um, our EAC and the Heart of Euclid team is, is nearing their 1,000th volunteer hour, putting in work to install those planting beds. There's a wetland garden at the end of the, the, um, parking lot that they have installed to stabilize the wet and marshy grand, ground. And it did that job beautifully. So I'm so excited that we have volunteers to support, um, installing some of these best management practices on the township grounds for the community to come and see how they might be able to duplicate them at home. And it's also been a destination for other local environmental advisory councils and master naturalist groups, groups to come and see what we've done here. So I'm really proud of their work, and I think that she should feel really proud for her team.
I'd like to give credit to Susan Harris, because she's been the primary mover on preparing this grant application. As you know, preparing grant applications is no minor.
It's no party, yeah.
Primarily responsible for preparing this application.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And everyone's going to call before they dig, right? Call 811, call before you dig. It's planting season, so call 811 to make sure that everywhere you dig is, there's no underground utilities. Just putting that out there. Um, so any other comments or questions about the tree vitalized grant application? I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next on the agenda are snow, snow bid results.
So we had our bid opening, which was held this past Friday, October 7th. Um, no new, no bids were received. This is the second time that we went out to bid for this. So now the, uh, the township will now seek out contractors for snow removal for the winter.
Okay. Sounds good. Are there any comments about that?
No.
Questions? No. All right, we'll move on to the Horseshoe Lane Block Party on October 22nd.
So the residents of Horseshoe Lane are requesting a block party, October 22nd, from 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Um, I did inform the chief and also Tara, and they both have no issue with this. So, um, as long as the board is okay with them closing the road.
Okay. Do you want a formal vote on this, or?
Just a thumbs up.
Yeah, just a thumbs up. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we love block parties, as long as, as long as they're safe and fun. Um, okay, next up on the agenda, res, oh, no. Um, we're gonna, well, let me just say it. Resolution 2022-14, updating the Euclid Township Employee Manual. Scott, do you want to give a little brief update on that agenda item?
We're, we are going to table this for this evening, just because there was a last minute change that needs to be made. However, um, we have been working for months now to update the employee policy. So, um, hopefully, fingers crossed, November, it'll be back for the board for a vote.
Okay. Uh, so can I get a motion to table item number six, the resolution updating Euclid Township Employee Manual?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Uh, I'll just make a comment that I'm very excited that, I'm thankful for all the work that we've been doing to update our policy manual. And I know it's taking a long time, but it's a very important initiative, and I can't wait to do it. Uh, are there any comments from the public? Then I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's table till next month. Uh, number seven, ordinance 2022-07, approving fees added to the amount collected for delinquent accounts. That sounds very scary.
It does, but, um, so new regulations went into effect November 30th of last year, um, which have caused Portnoy Law Associates, um, to change their first step in their collection process, um, by sending out a model validation notice to each property owner. So they have absorbed the cost, um, of all these notices, um, since November. Uh, moving forward, though, they will need to pass that cost on to the property owners, um, as it is done with other collection charges. So the ord, um, the ordinance and agreement addendum will authorize the $25 fee for the model validation notice, um, as well as bring the fee schedule in line with their current fee schedule.
Okay.
So that's the only thing that's changing is the $25 fee for that delinquent, for delinquent accounts.
Okay. Um, are there, oh, can I get a motion to approve ordinance 2022-07, the fees added to the amount collected for delinquent accounts?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Any comments or questions from the public? Nope. Uh, I'll take a vote, then. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, before we go to open public comment, I'll just go read through the announcements. Um, on October 13th, the Historical Commission will meet at 7:30 at Cadwalader House. These are all open to the public, by the way. On October 18th, Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop Meeting will be here at 4:00 PM. October 19th, the Zoning Hearing Board will meet at 7:00 PM to discuss, and a variance, a rear yard variance and the Chick-fil-A parking variance. It's fine. It happens to me all the time. Um, on October 20th, the Environmental Advisory Council will have their workshop meeting at 7:00 PM. October 21st, the Industrial Development Authority will meet at 9:00 AM. I'm adding Tony Gorkin's announcement about on October 29th, Saturday before Halloween, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, will be Monsters Masks and Milkweed. And then on October 31st, the township, well, that's Halloween, and we generally have trick or treating between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. But we don't regulate it. Uh, October, I mean, no, November 12th, the Planning Commission will meet at 7:30 PM. November 2nd, sorry. Planning Commission, 7:30 PM. November 7th, the Park and Rec Committee will meet here at 7:30 PM. Oh, uh, November 8th is Election Day, and the Township Office will be closed at noon. November 10th, Historical Commission will meet at 7:30 at the Cadwalader House. And the next Board of Supervisors meeting will be on the 14th of November at 7:30 PM. Now, I'd like to open the meeting to public comments or questions. If there are any. Yes.
Okay, first of all, I would like to thank the, the board very much for voting and approving the, um, single-use plastic ordinance last month. That was really thrilling. We've been looking for that for a long time. Um, and it's nice to see we're joining a bunch of other townships that are announcing these kinds of things right in this timeframe as well. Um, I was at the Northern Chester County, um, EAC group meeting, and I believe it was East Boytland announced theirs. And they provided to us, um, forwarded to us a whole bunch of really good information, uh, that they had put out to the community. Um, I'm speaking now as a citizen. As some of you know, I have a relative who owns a very visible business in the township. And we've been, had some conversations around the, the cash register about what does this mean to them? How do they, what are they supposed to do? Um, what information is available to them? How should they be communicating to their customers and whatever? And there's, there's some mixed response on that, like, okay, do I have to scrap my plastic bags and whatever? So my question is, what are we doing along the lines of what some of these other townships are doing to communicate to the businesses and to the public?
Yes.
What are we providing for them to handle this sometimes fraught issue?
Right, right. Thank you for that question, Tony. Um, so yeah, we just passed a single-use plastic bag ordinance, and the ordinance does specify, some, answer some of those questions. But yeah, Scott, do you want to talk about how we're reaching out to the businesses?
Say, similar to many other townships in the area that have passed these ordinances, the township kind of worked on a graphic sheet that's displayed at, um, the cash register that explains what is, what has been passed and why, you know, why it's doing that. We've also discussed with the EAC, the, about the possibility of working on educational outreach material. The ordinance doesn't go into effect for a few months, so we have time to develop that and roll that out. Um, this was definitely something that, a decision that was made with the business community in mind and with the idea of making sure that was properly communicated to them.
Okay. Does, does that answer your question?
Yes, I thought we had, I thought we had a shorter timeframe, and we had stressed in our EAC meetings, um, you know, to push out.
Communicate, yes. Aggressively. Yes, yes.
So to speak, which, which was kind of the discussion in the Northern Chester County EAC, where they have the various methods that they used to get ahead of it. It's one of the townships even had surveys beforehand and whatever. So.
Okay.
I, I think, although I understand that there's plenty of time, I don't know that there's plenty of time because, uh, the businesses are out there hearing about it and, and need direction.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any other comments or questions from the public? Nope. In that case, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for coming. Aye. Thank you for coming out this evening, everybody.